Thank you, everyone. Is there any agenda additions or deletions?
Just the one that I gave you. That instead of approving the February minutes, the March meeting minutes.
Where is Steph's ability?
Alright. At this time, I'd ask for not hearing any major additions or deletions. Approval of March 22nd minutes. Is there anyone like to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'm making a motion, accept them as read. I didn't see any corrections.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Alright, hearing not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Alright, moving right down the highway. Road Commissioner's report.
We ended up with some mud on some of the roads and patches and places and stuff. We hauled in some boney or stone to stiffen it up, so give it some base. And now we're doing a top coat over top of them right now, and the potholes are starting to come. So, we're working on all that. It's gonna take a little while to get it all over town. However, Gorge Road, if anybody's traveled that, that is real bad. But, we have five residences on the western side of it, which they can come off Route 7, which they do, and it's pretty good shape to their driveways. So that would be one of the last ones we conquer. We took delivery of the new Mack dump truck last week. Seems to be working real well. Another thing, we have a driveway permit to be approved, a select board.
You have it in the pile?
I got it right here. I didn't put it to you.
Alright, why don't you?
This here is a driveway permit for Louis McNeil on East Clarendon Road. And, he wants to leave his existing driveway to his house, but to incorporate a driveway that's just past his house a little bit on his property to get to his garage. He was telling me when I did a site visit that originally there was a driveway there, quite a few years ago. There's no, because of the slopes and stuff, there's no culvert required or ditch.
That's on the north side, right?
Yeah.
On the north side?
On the north side of the house, yes.
Everything's in order. You've gone over what he needs and all that stuff?
Yep.
I'll make a motion. We go ahead and approve the driveway permit for Louis McNeil in that case?
Alright, Bob beat you. Sorry. Alright.
About all I have, unless there's other questions?
I got one quick thing. I've been approached already this spring. I know it's pretty early yet about the stop line at Coal River in North Shewa Bay.
We gotta do that, and there's, yeah, a few other ones that.
We gotta do one, hopefully, warm weather permits.
Yeah, that's what I figured. Then it was pretty early, but I brought it up, so it's...
I gotta make a note. Don't put it on the board and forget.
Alright, is there anything else? Any other questions? Anybody have any questions on the computer? Or highway? Okay, moving right along. Selectment warrants are right here, being passed around, open to the public. We have no guests in the room, so... Is there any public comments? Anybody want a public comment on anything so far? Alright, hearing nothing. Old Business V-Trans Tanner and Hoyer and Associates on the Kingsley Bridge, discussion.
Okay, so we're gonna turn it over to V-Trans then. You folks, whoever was gonna share their screen, you should have that capability. If not, let me know. And I can change the setting, but you should be all set. And we're gonna let V-Trans jump in to do their presentation at this time. You will need to unmute yourself, obviously. Okay, Laura, I think it looks like you're gonna go first.
While Joseph gets the screen sharing up and running. I'm Laura Stone, the V-Trans Scoping Engineer. We have Joseph Bigshow with us tonight, as well as Sean James from Hoyle Tanner and Associates. They're really considered some of the leading experts for covered bridge design. Really, tonight, we're just gonna give an... I have a little bit of an echo. Hopefully, you can't hear that too. But, tonight, we're gonna give an overview of the existing conditions of the bridge, talk about the alternatives that we considered in the scoping report. And, really, we want to build consensus towards recommended alternative. This is also really a forum to hear your questions, concerns, try to get some of those questions and concerns answered. Also, here with us of mention is JB McCarthy from V-Trans. He will be the Design Project Manager. And we have Kyle Obenauer, who is the V-Trans Senior Architectural Historian. So I'll pass it over to you, Joseph.
Thank you, Laura. Can you all see my screen okay?
Yep.
Great. So, just a brief overview about the project. Last August, we came to the town through a Zoom meeting. We did a local concern meeting at that time. We told you about the project, the schedule that we had at that time, and some of the options that we're gonna look into it. Since then, we did have another meeting with V-Trans, and also Historic Cover Bridge Committee from V-Trans. That meeting was held back in October of last year. I believe the town's select board members were invited, but I do not remember if any of them had attended. So this presentation tonight is more or less what we presented to the Historic Cover Bridge Committee at that time. We have a little bit more information since then. We have the cost for different options, and we wanna go over all those options tonight, and hopefully, we build in some consensus to what the town is looking for here. So, I have about thirty-six slides. I'm gonna go through the slides, and I prefer that you save the questions till the very end. And then, at that time, when you ask me the question, I'll do the best I can to answer it. If not, I got Sean James from our office here, so he'll take all the hard questions on our end here. Then Laura will jump in as needed for things that she can provide some input. So the outline of the presentation, we first gonna talk about the project purpose and need. We're gonna give you a brief background, what we've done to date, inspection findings. We did a detailed inspection of the bridge last June. We looked at a lot of areas on the bridge that have deficiencies, so we wanna show you some of those deficiencies. We did cover those areas back in August of last year, but we wanna bring them up again, just to make sure everyone is aware as to what the issues are. And then, we're gonna talk about the alternatives options that we are looking into. We're gonna talk about some of the recommendations on our part. And then, we'll close out with a summary, and then also the anticipated project schedule. So, project purpose and need was to evaluate Kingsley Cover Bridge and extend the service life, and also continue the Kingsley Cover Bridge as a special use road crossing over the Mill River. The need for the project is to provide access across the river in the eastern part of the town. The bridge was constructed in eighteen thirty-six, and there are two major rehabilitations that have been recorded on the past. The most recent one was done thirty-four years ago in nineteen eighty-seven, in which the floor system was replaced, and then a good portion of the lower members of the trust were replaced at that time. The Kingsley Cover Bridge is listed on the National Register of Historic Places in nineteen seventy-four. So there's certain standards that we are following here, and making sure that we're doing the right thing to the trusses and doing all the different options that we've gone on the past on the last meeting as to priority of uses, whether we have replacements or repairs or strengthening of some members. So we're gonna go into the details into those options. Some quick facts about the bridge. The bridge is hundred and twenty-one feet long from portal to portal. The two trusses, the two tower lattice trusses are spaced just under sixteen feet apart. They do provide a vertical clearance at the center of the bridge of just over twelve feet. The posting on the bridge is for eleven feet, so it's a little bit lower than what you got there, but you also have on the portals, you have the taper section, you have the knee bracing on the bottom. So at that location, the height is just over eight feet, I believe. So even though it's eleven feet posted, the clearance on the very edge of the portal is much less than that. And as we've seen recently, last October, I believe that the bridge was hit by an oversized vehicle. So just something to consider here. The bridge is also posted for three tons, or a weight limit of three tons. And the substructure consists of reinforced concrete abutments founded on bedrock. When we did inspection back in June, we used the National Bridge Inspection Standards, making sure that everything is consistently coded in conformance with those standards. So on a scale of zero to nine, zero being failed condition or closed, and nine being excellent condition, we rating the bridge overall as a five or a fair condition. The deck is rated as a seven or a good condition. The superstructure is rated as a five, and then I'll show you the reasons why it's rated as a five or a fair condition. And then the substructure, it's similar to the deck, rating of seven. And then the channel down below where the waterway opening is below the bridge is rated as a eight or a very good condition. Starting from the top down, I'm gonna show you photos that we took during our inspection. These are the same photos that we showed back in August. But again, I'm gonna be quick here, and just trying to cover all the bases here, and make sure that everyone is aware of what the issues are with some of the bridge members. So, starting from the top, the roof has some blistering on the paint, there's some fading. The ridge cap, as shown here on the photo on the left, is attached either with nails or screws with rubber gaskets. The issue with the rubber gasket is that over time, they do crack and they let water inside the roof. Not typically down now. Nowadays, it's not typically down that way. All the fasteners are concealed, and they're not exposed to the environment. So this is some of the issues that we noted on the roof. And also, there's a lot of trees that overgrown, mostly on the south end of the bridge here. And that's promoting a lot of infestation, a lot of insect damage, that we're gonna show you some photos and the damage that have caused into the bridge. So definitely some maintenance on the town's part here to look into possibly cutting the vegetation as soon as possible. And as part of our project, we're definitely gonna look into definitely removing some of that vegetation and not get it over the bridge and promote that infestation for the insects. Down below the roof, we got the roof rafters on the photo here on the left. You could see there are some breaks, there is some water leakage at this particular location. That's why we have the rot. We have a roof rafter that's broken on this photo here, so there's quite a few roof rafters like that. And then, another member below the roof rafter that you could see that is completely rotted, and this is very obvious. When you get underneath the bridge, you can't miss this location. And the other thing that we noted was on the additional members that were added on the nineteen eighty-seven rehab or earlier. There's a lot of overcuts on the members. There's a bolted connection here. And for some reason, this member here, this knee brace that braces the cover bridge against the wind load, was overcut significantly. So there's definitely a weak point at that location that's contributing to some of the racking that we have on the bridge. The guy wires, there are guy wires on each quadrant of the bridge. They're not really well attached. Some of them are tied against a tree or a dead tree. Some other ones are loose, connected with a loose anchor on the ground. So there's definitely some issues with the guy wires. The trust members, as shown here, they have breaks. This is one of the diagonal members, the lattice members. You could see that member did not have such a large gap, and you could see that it's a four to five inch gap now that's split up, and the members are opening up. So the connection capacity here is compromised. We have another split on another lattice. And some of the work that was previously done, we have a splice connection on the lattice members. And you could see a gap here of well over an inch. On some locations, we measured inch and a quarter. So, that gap over there is telling us that we have some over-stressing of the connectors here, the bolted connection here. So there's definitely something that we need to look into as part of the rehabilitation project to either replace those connectors with stronger ones, or add another connector to beef up that connection there. And then you can see more split lattice on the trust members here. On the southwestern portion, or southwestern quadrant of the bridge, this is the picture that I'm showing here on the right side. On the two-foot level, I was measuring about three-quarters of an inch out of plumb. So the bridge at that location is out of plumb. And what's contributing to that out of plum-ness on the bridge is the rotting on the bottom of the bedding timbers down below. On the next slide, I'll show you those photos. So the support beams underneath, they have rotted beyond repair. And as a result of that, the bridge is settling down at that quadrant, and that's what causing that racking into the bridge. And previously, I mentioned the insect damage, and that's what we've shown here on those two photos on the left. Just a lot of damage, and some of it is hidden. You can't really see if you, even if you look for it, it's hidden. And that's what I'm showing here on the photo on the left side, on the bottom here. That's a nice pick, about five inches deep, that's going into the member. And you can see the powdery texture of the timber here. So that's a pretty hollow member that's been damaged by insects over the years. And this is the photo that I mentioned earlier down below on the southwest quadrant. This is the floor beam that supports the floor. So that floor beam is just hanging up in the air. It's supported by the deck. It's supposed to be no gap here, but we measured almost three-inch gap. So that floor beam, whenever traffic goes over, it just keeps pounding up and down, and the deck is what's keeping it there. So, what's causing this settling here is the timber blocks. They've been rotted, and they've been settling over time. So, that's what we noted. That was mostly noted on the souther side. There's definitely some rock on the north side of the bridge, but the worst condition is on the southern end. The repairs that were done on eighty-seven, they're holding up really well on the bottom core. But we do have some rusting, some corrosion that started to develop into the steel bolts and the connectors here on the bottom core. And that's what I'm showing on the photo on the upper right-hand corner here. So even though they were galvanized when they were put into the bridge back in eighty-seven, they're starting to show some signs of corrosion from de-icing agents that are making its way into the bridge. The runners, the problem with the runners that we saw is that it traps the debris between the two lines of runners. And the other big problem there is that when the cars travel over the runners and if you get off-track, it's very hard to get back on the runners, and then there's the potential for that vehicle to hit any of the trust members. So, we're gonna make some recommendations here, and I believe we talked about this at the last meeting we had with the town. And it sounded like the consensus was from everyone that attended the meeting to do something about that. And then also, on each end of the bridge, we have this ramping effect where the runners are tapered down. And then as you drive on the bridge, you really have to slow down there. And as you get on, there's that bump on the very end of it, because you're trying to get over the ramp. And that's what sometimes could cause a vehicle to not stay on the runners and then just get off-track. And that's where I mentioned the concern is to, for the vehicle to get back on the track, but not damage any of the trust members. The floor system is in good condition, and the floor system was replaced in eighty-seven. We didn't see anything wrong with any of the floor beams down below. The concrete abutments are founded on bedrock. They're in good condition. There is some cracking, there is some spalling, there is some delamination on the concrete. We also see some of the fluorescent staining. So fluorescent is a deposit of salt or chloride that's into the concrete, and it's penetrating from the concrete. So that tells us that there is some corrosion into the steel, into the concrete. But, most of the deficiencies that we noted on this photo here can be repaired. And the hardest part to repair them is gonna be for the contractor to get access down below into the bottom of the abutments, because as you all know, the banks are very steep, and it's gonna be quite a challenging effort for the contractor to get their equipment and repair those areas during construction. So based on what we've seen to date, and based on our understanding of this cover bridge, when it was done and all the rehabilitation that was done, we believe that it can be rehabilitated to either repair some members, strengthen some members, or do some replacements on select areas. And those are areas that we're gonna explain to you tonight. We analyzed the bridge for code design loads, for the snow loads. We applied the fifty pound per square foot ground snow loads. When we apply it to the roof, based on the type of roof and the slope of the roof and other conditions that we have at this bridge, that fifty PSF load gets reduced to almost half of it, to twenty-seven pounds per square foot. Because we have a slippery metal roof here, so that's helping us a lot to keep the snow at a minimum over the bridge. And then we also have a wind load of about twenty-two pounds per square foot that's blowing against the bridge. So those are the loads that we analyze the bridge for. And for the live load or the vehicle load going over the bridge, we had four different options. We had H3 or three-ton loading, and that's what the bridge is posted right now for three-ton loading. And then we went up to twelve-ton, fifteen-ton, and twenty-ton. And there's different amount of work that the bridge would need to get done for any of those options here that we looked for. So, starting from the top, we have the roof rafters and the roof boards. And on this slide here, I'm summarizing the replacements that we have to do. So we estimating that about twenty percent of the roof boards need to be replaced. We also estimating about twelve roof rafters, or nineteen percent of the roof rafters, to be replaced due to condition. And then, another five that we can repair, that we don't have to remove, so we can epoxy-repair them. Down below the roof, we got the bracing, we got the cross beams and the X-bracing and the knee bracing here. There's a lot of different wood sizes that compromise, that consist on that bracing. So the cross beams are eight by nine, the X-bracing is four by four, and then knee braces, for the most part, are four by four. So for replacements, we have about three cross beams, or twenty-seven percent of the cross beam to be replaced. And another five locations where we can repair those cross beams and not replace them. We have three braces, or fifteen percent, to be replaced due to condition. And then we have another twenty-three percent of the knee braces and nine percent of the added knee braces to be replaced for condition. The guy wiring that I mentioned earlier is not in great condition. It's keeping the bridge mostly from racking, but there's definitely rack on the bridge that we have measured. So in order to potentially eliminate that guy wiring, there are a couple options that we've recommended here. We could either strengthen the cross beam to cord connections, on the photo on the right here. This is a sample connection that was done on the Green River Cover Bridge that we designed the rehabilitation a few years back. So at this particular location, there's a steel bracket that gets mounted into the cross beam, and then we through-bolt it to the top cord. So that's one option. Another option is to add additional bracing right below the cross beam. So, on the slide here, this is a plane view looking down into the bridge. So you have the east and the west truss. You have the existing bracing here. And then what we propose is the bracing in red, that will be mounted below the existing cross beam, but it's gonna brace the cord member. So this bracing, if I go back on the photo here, will be sitting right below the cross beam, and will be connecting to the cord member here from one truss to another truss. So by adding this additional bracing, we're keeping the bridge square, and we may not need to keep the guy wiring that you see on each quadrant of the bridge. So those are the two options. When we presented those two options to the Historic Cover Bridge Committee, they were leaning towards this option, because it's reversible, meaning that we're not altering the historic character of the bridge, and it's something that can easily be removed in the future if there's a need to restore it to the original condition. The connections can be done, but usually those large steel plates and the bolts that tend to trap moisture in there. So it's not usually preferred unless you really have to do it. So, our recommendation and Historic Cover Bridge consensus was to do this option here. The disadvantage of this option is that you end up reducing the heights, the vertical height of the bridge from twelve-one to, you reduce it by about five inches. So you reduce it to eleven-six at the center of the bridge. So that's the disadvantage by adding additional bracing down below. So again, on this photo, that bracing would sit right below the cross beam, and then you thread in between all those diagonal members. And then on the very end of the bridge, you're not gonna get that twelve-foot-one vertical clearance. You're gonna get five inches less. And then, you're not affecting the clearances on each end of the portal at the trusses. Moving down below into the floor system, we analyzed the floor system for the loads that I previously mentioned. And what we found is that the deck itself, it's good for twenty-ton loading. The floor beams are good for fifteen-ton loading. So, even though the deck is thirty-four years old, the runners have taken most of the beating on the bridge. So by replacing the runners, we are preserving the nail-eliminated deck down below the runners and also the floor beams. There's hardly any work that we have to do on the deck on the floor beams if we go with any of the options here, the three-ton, twelve-ton, or fifteen-ton loading. But if we need to go up to twenty tons, all the floor beams would need to get replaced, because they're not adequate for much more than fifteen tons. So, on this slide, this is an elevation view of the east truss. So when you're looking on the side of the truss, this is what you see. And then when you're looking on the sections, we have what we call the cords. So cord one, two, three, four. From the top down, the convention is cord one is at the very top, and then cord four is at the very bottom. So what we've shown on the upper portion of this view, it's cord one, plain view when you're looking from the top. Cord two, plain view, and then same thing on cord three and four down below. So the members that I'm showing in red are members that will need to get replaced due to the condition, because it's either a break, a split, or a rot, or insect damage. So everything that we saw in the field, that will need to be replaced, no matter what the loading we choose for the bridge, it's shown in red here. So you have some lattice members, and then you have some cord members, mostly on the top, nothing on the bottom. The only member that we need to replace on the bottom is to, on the very bottom cord, we need to replace this piece here. It's a twenty-four-foot-long piece in order to bring it up to three-ton loading, because it doesn't quite meet the three-ton loading based on our calculation. So that will need to be replaced on the east truss. Looking on the west, very similar quantity and coloring. You see some lattice in red, you see some cord members in red, and the percentages are shown here. So you have about sixteen percent of the lattice members that will need to be replaced, or ten percent of the cord that will need to be replaced to bring it up to three tons and take care of all the deficiencies that we have noted. When we go to the next level up to the twelve-ton loading, you need to do all the replacement that I just showed you in red, and then you also need to do the replacements in blue here. So, the blue, it's the additional members that we need to replace, because they're not strong enough. And then the members in purple, which is this lattice here and here, those are additional lattice that will need to get increased in size. So the lattice is three by eleven, so we need to increase that member to something larger, to four and a half by twelve, in order to get more capacity at those two locations. And then down below into the bottom cords, we need to do... into the bottom cords, we need to do some replacements in blue here in order to bring it up to 12 ton loading. And this was for the east truss. When we look at the west truss, similar quantities, about 7% of the lattice who need who need to get replaced are four lattice members in addition to the one shown in red. And then also most of the bottom cord that's shown here in blue would need to get replaced. Moving up to the 15 ton loading, you could see that there's more members that will need to get replaced with stronger members. So you could see here that for 15 tons, we end up replacing 37% of the lattice members, which is quite a bit. And then cord members, we have some in blue, some in purple. And the purple means that the member not only needs to get replaced, but also needs to get increased in size to make it even stronger. So that was the east truss. The west truss is similar. You're replacing about 37% of the lattice members and 21% of the cord members. And you can see here, the different shading, the blue and the purple tells you where we have to replace it and what type of replacements we have to do, whether we match in kind or whether we increase the size to something larger. And when we go all the way up to 20 ton loading, again, as expected, you have to replace more lattice members with larger members. So there's more purple here, less blue. And then on the on the bottom, you can see the entire bottom cord will need to get replaced with a much larger member. But then also the cord three right up above cord four, a lot of replacements on that. So overall, you're looking 37% lattice replacement additional, and then another 39 for the cord on the east truss. And then the west truss is very similar. The percentages are similar, 37% on the lattice and 41% on the cord. So that's what you would take to make the upgrade from three tons all the way up to 20 tons. There's different amounts of members that we have to either replace in kind or increase in in size and strength as well. I mentioned the issue that we have on the bridge down below and the bearing blocks that are rotting, and they're they're settling down from the rot. So the issue that we see here is that the face of a abutment is several feet away from that where the block sits. So we want to take advantage of supporting the truss and reducing the span by adding more bearing blocks across the entire surface where they sit over the abutments, and then also adding another beam that extends beyond the face of a abutment that we can deliver out in order to reduce the span and make the span even smaller when we designed the rehabilitation of the bridge. So the graphic here is something that we did a couple of years ago for a similar cover bridge in town of Montgomery. This is the Long Creek Cover Bridge. So you can see that that sleeper beam, we call that the sleeper beam, that extends several feet out beyond the face of a abutment here. And then we have more blocks down below to constantly support it over the 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 bridge abutments. Simple detail, but makes a huge difference on the the way that the loads are transferred and the the way that the loads are reduced when they get down into the truss. Because this is quite a span, 121 feet. It's quite a span for a tower lattice truss. But so by doing this, we take advantage of addressing the bearing issue that we have, but also reducing the span and being able to to replace or strengthen less members than we have to do otherwise if we didn't have to do this. For recommendation on the substructure, as I mentioned earlier, we have some repairs that we have to do on the abutments, pretty minor work. Again, the only challenge is going to be access, trying to get down below into the bottom of the abutment and doing the repairs and doing some crack sealing. And we also recommended to stain and seal the concrete because once you do all those repairs, the the chances are that the color of the repair, it's not going to be the same as the color of the existing concrete. So by staining and sealing the concrete, everything is going to look uniform color, and you wouldn't even tell as to where the repair area was done. Right of the ways, about three rods or 49 and a half feet. We we may need relocation of some, we may need some temporary relocation of the overhead lines, depending on the contractor means and methods as to how they're going to do the work. Most likely, we need to relocate some 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 of the utility poles. I mentioned the the problem that we have on the bridge with insect damage. So what we recommend for that is to apply the insecticide and fungicide coatings. And we've done that on a lot of bridges across the state. They've been proven system to reduce the insect infestation into the into the bridge. So the minimum, we recommend doing that, and also applying a fire retardant coating, which is called a Nochar or a Polysil. So what that coating does is that you apply it on the bare surfaces of the timber. And then if there is a fire, it's going to prevent that fire from spreading too quickly into into the wood members. Some other options for fire protection include protect a wire, which is a detection system. So you basically run a wire on the top cord, on the roof, down below the floor system. And then anytime there's a change, a drastic change in the temperature, that wire is going to detect that temperature, and it's going to send a signal to the fire station notifying them that there is a fire at the bridge and they need to respond. That system works pretty well. It's a it's a system that we've designed on the past on a lot of cover bridges. It does require a telephone line and most likely an internet connection. So there will be a fee that the town would need to pay monthly to to pay the telephone line and the connection there. So you could send the 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 signal to the fire station. Another thing that can be done here is to install a dry sprinkler system. The bridge is pretty long. It's 121 feet. So if there was a fire, if forbidden was a fire in the middle of the bridge, it's going to be pretty hard for the fire station to fight that fire in the middle of the bridge. So that's when the sprinkler system comes handy. But it's costly, and this is really the decision for the town to decide what they want to do here. The minimum, we recommend the Nochar. And then depending on what the town wants to do, whether you want to install that detection system or the sprinkler system, we could definitely look into that for the town. Another thing that we recommended is to add a lighting system in the bridge. So that that's going to require adding lights and concealing, trying to conceal the lights next to the timber members. It's pretty dark there. Once, even during the daylight, you you get on each end of the bridge is bright from the sunlight, but as you drive across the bridge, it gets pretty dark. So you would design the lighting system to make sure that that it's always on 24/7 on the interior base. And then on the outside base, it's going to be, it's going to be detected based on the light. If you have daylight, then you could save some money and not run the lights on the on the end base where you have the light coming from each end of the portals. So it's really a town decision as to what they want to do. But my understanding, on the last meeting that we had with with the historic cover bridge committee, they they did recommend that a lighting system be added to the bridge to to illuminate the the area inside the bridge and make it safer for for either pedestrians or for vehicle traffic that uses it. So in summary, we have some replacements or repairs on the superstructure members, everything above the the deck, everything above the abutments that we explained earlier. Substructure repairs, mostly concrete repairs and staining and sealing and cracking and crack sealing the areas of the abutments. For approach work, we have about 250 feet of roadway construction, new signage, and also new timber guard rail with a steel back plate on the backside of the timber. So that steel plate, you won't see it on the front face of the bridge, but it will be will be on the back of the timber. So the V-Trans has used that system on a lot of cover bridges across the state. So for the summary of the cost for three time loading, we estimating about 2 point, almost 2.1 million for full project cost. For rehabilitation for 12 tons, we estimating 2.24. 15 tons goes to 2.35. And then for 20 ton loading, the cost is a lot more at 2.82. The cost estimate that we that we've shown here was done a few months ago. The the market is very volatile right now with steel and timber prices. So hopefully, it comes down in the future. But if it keeps going up the way that it has been on the past, I'm sure some of you have gone to the lumberyard and you've seen that the two by four, they used to cost four bucks, is more like eight or nine, $9 right now. So hopefully that trend doesn't continue. But if it does, we need to revisit the cost estimating here because it has a huge implication here. Schedule is to, once we conclude the meeting tonight, hopefully, we get some feedback from the town and some consensus as to what options they want to pick. And then we can wrap wrap up the scoping report in the next week or so and submit it to V-Trans for approval. And then we'd be working on the contract plans after that and have the contract plans ready and approved by fall of next year, and then advertised the following January of 2023, and then constructed on the summer of 2023. And the construction duration is going to vary on which option we pick here. For option one, we estimating six months closure and construction duration. For option number two, we estimating eight months. For number three, 10 months, and then number four, 14 months. So just to give you a perspective as to how long those are going to be. So that concludes my presentation. And we'll open the floor to any questions that you may have at this time.
Is anybody on the computer have any questions?
Okay, are there any questions out there? If you want to wave at me, your, everybody is muted, so you'll need to unmute if you have a question you'd like to ask.
Lish, please.
I I do have a question. Harriet Perrow, I live at the the bridge end of East Street in Clarendon, and I just had a question regarding the normal weight for an ambulance and what that height is, whether that would would determine either a three ton or a 12 ton repair.
Yeah, I have feedback here, and we can defer to the town because I'm sure they would know what the ambulance weight is. But my understanding is that the ambulance will be more than three tons, less than 12 tons. And it's going to depend on what kind of ambulance you have, but most likely will be between the three and 12 ton loading. And and the height, I'm not sure on the height, but maybe someone from the town has that information for the type of ambulance that operates in town.
I know. Do you have any knowledge of the height, the height of ambulance?
Yeah.
Well, I guess all but in, we talked about the ambulance weights a little bit at the local concerns meeting. And again, at the cover bridge, Historic Cover Bridge Committee meeting back in October. And what we discussed is an ambulance is around six tons. And the town seemed favorable at the local concerns meeting to design the bridge to a 12 ton load rating, but to still post it at three tons. We could design it for a larger load, but have the capacity for for those ambulance vehicles.
Do I just speak up?
Yep, go ahead.
This is CJ Frankowitz. What is the highest rated loading that the bridge has ever had in the past?
The the bridge is posted for three tons right now.
And has it ever been posted higher than three tons?
I'm not aware of that.
To to our knowledge, CJ, it has never been posted for more than that.
Okay. And and that's the posting. And and the rating, like Laura was just talking about, you know, you could build it for 12, but or 10, and and post it for three. What's the highest rating it's ever had?
I'm not sure we have that information because over the years, the bridge members get replaced and not always get rated for those replacements. And we're not sure as to what the history has been. I don't know if V-Trans has that record, but like Robert said, the the bridge has never been posted for more than three tons. And this is quite a span at 121 feet to have anything over over three with the standard sizes that we see at this tower lattice bridge.
Well, when I see the the range, we could have, I can't remember what there was, but it was like a 10, 12, and 15, and 20. I can't remember. Are there some, yeah, there it is, 12, 15, and 20. Are there some vehicles that can't go across now that we're trying to get across?
A school bus, I I believe is around the next vehicle heavier than the ambulance. They'll be around 15 tons. But there's no way that you could fit the school bus through that opening.
Okay, that's that's coming to my point. You know, we certainly got a width limit on the bridge because it's one lane. I know Kevin Spencer couldn't get his farm machinery across the bridge in order to make hay on my, in my farm. So, you know, I I caution against having something at such a big loading for a truck or a vehicle that can't get across. That's that's the key. Don't don't build, don't build something that just can't be done. That isn't useful. That's what I mean.
Agreed. That's why we looked at all those different options, and the 12 ton made the most sense because you do have some reserve capacity for the ambulance. But you don't need to post it for 12 tons. You would post it for three tons, and then the ambulance would know that you would be safe to go across because it's rated for 12 tons.
Ambulances are that heavy?
Ambulances are somewhere between three and 12. Most of them are around six tons. But depending on what type of ambulance operates in town, it could be a little bit heavier than that.
Okay.
It could be up to eight. That's my understanding.
CJ, I think one of the things that we were considering early on in this discussion was the fact that just in case kind of an attitude, we wanted to build it so that we could, you know, say it's six to 12 tons. But that's in case somebody just goes across there so that we don't all of a sudden lose that bridge on a permanent basis. But we don't want to post it any higher than three tons. It was just a safety thing that we were thinking about.
I have a question. Janine Nelson?
Okay, Janine, go ahead.
I live up on on East Street, just about where the hill is. We all know that way heavier vehicles with boats attached, garden, a type of trucks that come through are way heavier than the three tons. So they're going to see a sign that still says three tons. And then if they happen to go through, it's okay. Is that what I'm getting?
That's what, that's, that was the discussion earlier on. I think you were at that meeting, Janine?
I could have been, yeah.
Yeah. And that that was part of the discussion. We want to keep it at a three ton limit, but for safety reasons, we wanted to overconstruct it.
So Janine, the issue right now that you brought up is that, when it's current condition, the bridge is in, it's a rough shape for some parts. There's a lot of deterioration, a lot of rot. And when you have an overload vehicle that uses the bridge, that there's some reserve capacity on the bridge, but you end you end up using it in reserve capacity. And then the bridge also takes a beating every time a vehicle heavier than three loads crosses over. It causes more damage to other members. So even though it may be okay for that vehicle to cross the bridge like it has been on the So even though it may be okay for that vehicle to cross the bridge like it has been on the past, we just have to know that it's causing damage to the bridge and it's end up using whatever reserve capacity, whatever safety factors that that were built into into those members that are constantly taking a beating from being overloaded by a much heavier vehicle.
Of course.
I have a question, Robert, or comment.
Cash? Oops, sorry.
I got another observation. Um, alternative two to three, the twelve ton to fifteen ton, uh, those three extra ton only costs, if I'm seeing this right, a hundred and ten thousand dollars. Two point two four to two point three five.
Correct. But the disadvantage of that is that you end up replacing a lot more members. So you go from this to the blue. So from west twelve ton to fifteen tons, you have to increase the size to a different size and then you end up replacing more lattice.
But but I'm seeing it only at a cost of a hundred and ten thousand dollars.
It's not so much only about the cost, but it's also for the historic character of the bridge because you end up replacing more members. That's the disadvantage of that option. You end up replacing more members. The cost is only that much because the contractor already have the shoring in place. They already there doing the work. They just have to replace a few more extra members that are not costing you so much, but you end up replacing more of the historic fabric of the bridge.
And is there some historic board that that could reject any of these proposals?
When we went through the historic cover bridge committee back in October, then they felt that, we got JB here, so JB could jump in. But they felt that the H twelve was the the best option on limiting the replacements and also providing a bridge for the town that that can handle their needs. Okay.
Okay, we had one more comment or question here in the room.
Well, this is probably a follow up of CJ. I was just looking at figures, I think I'm right. Um, somebody correct me if I'm not. You got a three ton weight limit at a price of what, just over two million? And then a twelve ton, uh, two million two. Between the three ton and the twelve ton, you got a hundred and seventy thousand dollars of added cost, which to me, for a hundred and seventy thousand, the town, uh, ten percent share is only seventeen thousand to beef it up to that point of going from three ton to twelve ton capacity.
And Cash, if I could jump in, uh, that means you got nine extra ton for a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And two to three, you got three extra ton for a hundred and ten thousand. Yours is a better deal.
That's what, yeah, that's what we all, we all agree with that.
Yeah, that's what we were, that that was kind of what the comment was there, yep.
Yeah. And I understand the safety factor is posting to three, but there are vehicles that are over three that are going to use it. And so you you, you know, to me, you really got to go to twelve ton. But I'm not an engineer or a traffic person.
And I'll just butt in for a second about the costs. Um, so prior to two thousand twelve, the town share for Town Howie Bridge Projects was always ten percent. There was legislation passed, Act one fifty-three of the of the two thousand twelve legislative session that said if a town closes the bridge during construction, their share is reduced by fifty percent. Further went on to say if a town rehabilitates a bridge versus replacing a bridge, their share is further reduced by fifty percent. So that ten percent share is reduced to two point five percent. So the town share for these projects is is two point five percent, not ten.
And the state is the rest?
Uh, eighty percent federal and the state is the rest. So in in this case, seventeen point seventeen point five percent, yep.
Got you, thank you. Good clarification.
So does that mean that so for our town, if we were to go to twelve, the town is paying two and a half percent of that two point four, uh, billion price tag? Is that what we would be responsible for as town members?
Correct.
And the twelve, it sounds like, is the recommendation because not only does it preserve the historic nature of the bridge the best, but it also preserves its longevity because it makes it safer. And it doesn't, it we're saying post it for free, but make it safe for twelve. So the ambulants that go through or the people with their boats that aren't thinking about the fact that they've now doubled the amount of weight that they're dragging through the bridge, even if they're short enough to go through, it will not further damage the bridge that way. It would seem logical to go, to me, to go to that level. Um, and the fact that in some of the repairs, it's also reducing the height clearance by five inches, leaving it as three would not encourage those individuals driving higher vehicles to think, well, I can stuff myself through there and make that, which certainly does not help the bridge. So that seems like a smart choice all the way around, in my opinion.
Yeah, that's a great summary, thank you.
Thank you for the great presentation. It was very thorough and understandable.
Okay.
Robert?
Uh, yep, Gary, go ahead.
Yeah, the only other thing I would point out, and I think Cash would jump on board to say, yeah, is if we can keep this project as short as possible so that we don't run into the spring, um, we're going to avoid an awful lot of problems down the road because I think we all know as you go south down East Street past where we all live, um, that road becomes just a quagmire in the spring. And then I just can't imagine all that traffic going down through there and then going down the bump road as well. It it Cash will be out there every day with buckets of gravel trying to keep the roads passable. So if we stick with even the twelve, which is only eight months, hopefully this could be wrapped up before the real spring thaw occurs.
Want to comment?
He's he's he is nodding in in agreement with you, Gary.
And I do want to say Cash does a great job. You know, we so appreciate the job he does keeping these roads passable because I know it's a it's a nightmare in the spring, so we do appreciate you, Cash.
Thank you. Don't forget the teamwork with my crew.
Uh, one other question. Uh, it looks like, uh, according to the timeline that the construction wouldn't start until twenty twenty-three. Are are you looking at, uh, construction starting late spring and then going into the fall? Or is there a specific timeline, uh, for construction or is that yet to be determined?
It's to be determined, but most likely will be late spring through in the fall and trying to do it in within then one season for the twelve ton loading.
It sounds to me like we're pretty much in agreement, both you folks that live over there and of course the the select board and the road commissioner, that the twelve ton would be a target for us.
Um, I do see one hand up. Jan, did you have a comment?
Uh, yes, hi, it's Jan McCoy, I live on East Street. Um, it's kind of what Gary was talking about with the traffic on East Street, especially in the springtime. Can we get sort of a guarantee from the select board and I guess from Cash that, um, the road will be looked at and checked periodically for the extra trucks that will be going up and down? And that if it gets, the problem I have with it is the dust. So if they could, you know, just kind of look at it and periodically spray it or do something like this. And, um, I'm also anticipating a lot of, um, extra traffic going up and down past our house because of the bridge being closed. So I have to thank Janine for getting the speed limit down to twenty-five, but there's hardly a day that goes by that I don't see somebody flying up past my house. So these are just concerns I have about it, but I think it's a great idea and I'm all for it.
So so from the other side of the room, Cash is is in agreement with you, yes, that we would be monitoring and certainly staying on top with the added traffic, um, both the the dust control as well as staying on top of the roads in general to make sure that they're, um, in good shape. Um, and also, uh, from my perspective, the board would be very committed to making sure, especially during that higher traffic time, that the sheriff's department is spending more time up you folks' way, um, to monitor that traffic and make sure that it is traveling at that new speed limit.
Great, thank you.
Uh, Janine Nelson, I have a question.
Okay.
Um, the slide that's on right now talks about lighting. I wondered how other people felt that we, do we need lighting? Um, I'm not sure that that's important or we we all have lights on our cars. I I just thought maybe how much would that add to the overall price? And do other people feel like this is necessary?
Well, I think it's a great idea. There's been more than once that I've come through that bridge at night and there's been somebody standing there in dark clothing pressed against the thing and you don't even see them until you're almost on top of them.
So I can jump in a little bit here. I believe the cost of the lighting was around thirty thousand dollars in today's dollars. But there's also a monthly premium that the town would have to pay for the power. It's not going to get much usage, but you're going to get some some kind of an invoice every month that the town will need to pay for the power.
It'd be another issue, I think. The folks that live right next to that bridge might be concerned that there's lights on all night long. So I I, you know, I, we'd have to think along those lines. The folks that live right near there, there might be an issue that way.
Exactly.
Yeah, but the house on the corner, I mean, what's her name? Um, um, I can't think of her name, I'm sorry.
Ellie?
But, yeah, Ellie's got a light pole right there. And on the other side, I think there's a light too, so there's already lights there.
Is this something that the town votes on?
Well, we would need to hear from the town. We don't need to make a decision tonight, but in the in the foreseeable future, we'd like to know what the town would like to do there. So we could go ahead and design that system if we need to.
Could something be done through efficiency Vermont with solar so that there wouldn't be electric bill?
That was just suggested by the road commissioner that we'd look into something along those lines as well.
The only issue with that is that during the winter months, you may not get any any lights due to the not enough sunlight during the day hours.
Maybe motion lights too.
That's something that I think that we can look at. Uh, we have a little time. I I I think for tonight, the bigger discussion is for us to make a decision on getting this bridge, what what, uh, what, uh, plan that we want to go to so that we can start the process.
And how will that decision be made?
Yes, good question.
I'd I'd like to see what the options are, really. If there is, you know, a a solar thing where there's, we can install some kind of battery system so that during the night, you know, it's working off a battery. Or if there's a program that with the power company that we can set up, you know, the, I'd like to find those things out instead of trying to make a decision without that knowledge.
The the issue with the battery during the winter months is going to be the cold weather. So the battery may not last through the night, even if you get a charge somehow. But you need to probably look into some kind of enclosure that you could heat somehow. So you'd need power no matter what to keep that battery warm.
Well, here again, I I still think that some folks think that we don't need lighting. Some folks think that we do. So I think starting the process right now to rebuild that bridge is the most important thing. It's going to take a little while to draw up plans and all these other things. And I'd like to do some investigating relative to lighting inside there.
So, Mr. Chairman, do you need, do we need a motion tonight on at least which weight level we're going for?
Ask, ask.
Do you, are you, are you looking for approval from our board tonight for a specific weight level target?
So I sent, um, via email, an acceptance of scope form. And in order for the project to move into design, uh, you will have to make a choice on an alternative. And that can just be sent back to me at any time. It does not need to be tonight. And that is just an alternative on what's, are you, is the design going to be the three tons, the twelve tons, fifteen, twenty, et cetera? Um, so that's all I really need to know and that that form can be, um, emailed back to me. And then as far as the lighting's concerned, I think that's more of a design detail and we can move this into the design process. And that can be worked out kind of early on in the design process. So it does not need to be tonight. Um, you can send that form back to me next week, um, after your next select board meeting if you want to discuss it again. Um, any of that works for me.
But I I think, um, you know, we we need a motion tonight to get the process started.
Is that scope form all of us or just representative? Do you have it in front of you?
Who is it?
So I emailed it to Mike, I believe, and I think as long as, you know, the chair signs it, that's fine. Um, just a signature from somebody.
Yes, it it, we can make a motion, just have the chair sign.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that the chair signs the scope of work form, uh, for the twelve ton option.
Second, is there any further discussion? All right, before I ask for the vote, I just wanted to, uh, say I appreciate the citizens who came forward with this. Um, and we're doing this in in this meeting tonight so that you folks who spent time with us tonight understand that we are going to move ahead with this project. So having said that, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right.
So what about, uh, fire protection? Where do you stand on that? Do you need more time to decide on that too? And again, like Laura said, we don't need an answer tonight, but sometime in the next few months, I think it would be beneficial to us.
Yes, so I, the consensus of the board is we're going to research lighting and fire protection and get back to you.
Okay. We had all that covered on the scoping report that we prepared. Laura sent the link to the town. So we have right up that explains in more detail as to what those options are.
Perfect.
I was going to ask one question on that. Is the, um, the price roughly the, uh, figured in with any type of fire protection or at bare minimum?
Yes, the the price that we had there was for the fire protection coating, the no char.
Yep.
And then lighting.
Included lighting.
We did not include the sprinkler or the fire detection system. The sprinkler is going to be, I don't know, Sean, what would you say the sprinkler system, just ballpark value, hundred thousand dollars? Based on some past projects that we've done on the past, based on this length?
Yeah, probably in the, like you said, steel prices are all over the place right now, especially tube steel. But yeah, probably in the eighty to a hundred.
And then the fire detection, the protector wire, the one that I explained that you run a wire on the whole length of the bridge and you'd send a signal to the fire station. I would estimate the cost to be, I don't know, thirty to forty-five, Sean?
Yeah, yeah, I would agree.
Plus the the monthly fees that you'd have to pay for the connection and the power too. For the option, you also need an enclosure with a with a heater to to keep that system going during the winter months. So you you would need both the the telephone connection, the power, and possibly internet connection too, or two telephone lines.
Okay. Any further comments or questions? I think we're, I think we're ready to move on with the rest of our agenda tonight, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank everybody for coming and we're gonna. Thank everybody for coming, and we're gonna move on to the, uh, rest of our meeting.
Thank you.
All right, take care.
Thank you.
Be safe. Okay, road commissioner.
Very much.
Thank you. Road Commissioner Sleckman offices requested by CJ Frankelwitz.
So he had written you guys a letter a couple weeks ago, um, and he just requested, like, why a selectman can also be a road commissioner? So I sent him some paperwork about the incompatible offices chart, and I provided you with that as well.
Yep, so CJ is still here, so we'll bring him into the discussion. So CJ, we're to the, um, question that you posed regarding road commissioner and select board.
Yes.
Um, and, uh, Katie just shared with us that she did send you the state incompatible and compatible offices list?
Yes.
Okay.
And I've seen it, and, and, uh, I didn't see any footnote, so apparently it's state law.
Correct. Though, that is, that is straight out of the state statute.
Yep. Right. Okay.
Did you have any further questions or discussion you wanted to have before we move on from it?
No.
Okay.
Thanks, CJ.
Thank you, CJ.
All right, new business, office reappointments. Oh, boy.
Is there a list floating?
There is definitely a list. And I'll go through this briefly. Uh, we have airport committee, that's myself and Rick, community center, Matt, Robert Bixby, Marjorie Sutherland, Art Minard, Gloria Minard. Community center board, town rep, Joan Bixby, Nancy Buffam. Emergency management director, Matt Jacobowski. E911 contacts, Katie Knopf and Matt Jacobowski, secondary. Uh, rec committee, Matt Jacobowski and Rick Wilber. There are five vacancies. Special police officer, that's vacancy. Do you have any comment on that?
On a special?
Yeah.
Uh, if you're gonna go that route, you're gonna plan on spending some money.
Yeah, that's what I thought. That's why we didn't do that.
That's why we didn't do it before.
Yep. Uh, state police advisory committee, select board liaison, Bob Bixby. Uh, cemetery fact finding committee, Heidi Congdon, uh, Joan Bixby, there's a vacancy. Yes.
She was not interested in continuing on the committee.
Okay, so there is a vacancy.
Just a, a big thank you to Cindy for all of the time put in for the years that she has been on the committee. She has been an incredible asset.
Do we should draft a letter?
Yeah. Draft something up, and then we can bring it up at the next meeting and send it. Uh, tree warden, that used to be Joe Peterson. Has he stepped down from that?
Yeah, two years now.
Um, grand juror, Mike Binon, first constable, CJ Frankelwitz. Rutland County Solid Waste District, uh, rep, Dave Potter is a regular, Robert Bixby is the alternate. Rutland County Sheriff's Office Select Board Liaison is Rick Wilber. Planning Commission, Heidi Eccleston. Zoning Board of Adjustment, Bronson Spencer's, who's the chair, Gail Lacazie, and there's one opening.
Yeah, so John Coleman was, um, that vacancy, and he said, if you could find someone else, he would prefer that, but if you can't find anyone, he would continue. So I figured you'd post that opening for a little bit and see.
I think any of the openings on this list, let's post them.
Should be posted, sure.
All right, so.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve all of the aforementioned offices and post any vacancies on the town's website.
All right, Rick, you won that one.
I did.
Hold on, favor in motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, looks good. Got more paperwork here. Um, approve of the AFP.
So that's the annual financial plan. Um, we have to fill that out for Vtrans, specifically for the Hagan grant.
Everything's in order on it?
Yeah, I went over it with the treasurer.
Uh, looks like everybody has to sign that.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the annual financial plan for Vtrans, and the board signs it.
There's a second?
Yep.
Yeah, seconded it. Is there any further discussion? Hearing, none of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? I'll pass this right off. Go that way first, Rick, anyway. Uh, approve the NEMRIC, um, software licensing agreement, and that's these you have here. And, um, it looks like it's just the select board chair has to sign it. There's two pages and copies for the town. So.
I'll make a motion that we go ahead and sign that with your signature.
Is there a second to that?
I second that.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing, none of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Um, we have a liquor license for Steve's Country Market.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the liquor license for Steve's Country Market and let the board sign it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion?
Everything in order.
Yep. Hold on, favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Bob, second, or Rick seconded, I guess.
Beat him again.
All right, we have, uh, Mill River Union School District Special Election. I think, Robbie, you want to speak to that?
Yep, so, um, just a couple different things. Um, at the 11th hour on Friday, um, I was requested to testify before Senate, um, governance, um, which Mr. Collomore's on and a bunch of other senators are on. They oversee, um, governance structures, including in making recommendations about issues with governance structure, and the school board issue, um, had been brought to their attention through Senator Collomore. Um, so I was requested to participate. Um, Ken Fredette participated on behalf of the opposition, um, and basically for state, wanting to leave it the way it was. Um, and then there was two other individuals that were on there, um, one from Wallingford, one from Shrewsbury, actually, that were all, um, making statements that it needs to go back to a town-controlled situation, and that it should not be a school board decision who represents, in other words, it shouldn't be the other school board members from other towns that ultimately decide who our representative's gonna be. Um, because thereby Clarendon's voice, you know, the, the argument was Clarendon's voice was diminished. Um, so, um, Mr. Fredette and I had, I would say, some lively discussion, um, in the midst of the Senate hearing. Um, but in the end, um, the Senate Committee very strongly told, uh, Mr. Fredette to relay back to his side of things that Clarendon's voice needed to be heard. Um, in the midst of it, it did come out very clearly, um, and Mr. Fredette even admitted that we have the option of a special election on the table, that it is something we can do. Um, so in looking at that, and doing some research, and looking at some hypotheticals with Gloria of what an election would look like based on state statute, and how far out it needs to be, and knowing that the school board has, at least to us at this point, made it clear that they are going to appoint somebody in early April, um, that vacancy does now exist on that board. So we technically can begin the process of warning an election and, and going down that road. At this point, um, my viewpoints on an election, and the reason I'm coming and asked for this to be on the agenda, um, I believe that, uh, election is even more warranted now, in the fact that we have three candidates that have stepped forward, and in my opinion, we have three candidates, I think, that all possess qualities, um, that would be well-served on Mill River's board, um, which is all the more reason for me to say, I don't want to make that decision for our townspeople when there's three people. I, I want, I want the townspeople to make that decision.
Exactly.
And I would hope, um, if we proceed with this tonight, and get an election on the books, and Gloria can begin the process of, you know, obviously, the candidates have to declare, so we officially warn the election. Basically, we, we state our intentions. You'll see in front of you that, um, the date for the election with all the way that everything plays out, and we did, I think, we built ourselves, and, and Gloria could speak to this if we wanted to ask her specifics, but I believe we built ourself an extra week window time, based on state statute. So basically, the, the election falls that it would have to take place on Tuesday, May 18th, is where it falls. If the Mill River Board were to proceed and appoint somebody, which certainly is within the statute and within their right, um, that person would serve for roughly a month, and an election would be held, and if that person that got appointed was elected, so be it. But otherwise, if it was elect, somebody else was elected, that person would step in and take over. So, um, I'm very much a small government person who believes that the right and the voice of the people is supreme. That's what puts us here, and I believe that's what should put, um, people's representation forward. So I think that, from my perspective, um, and we certainly can have conversation, but I would make the motion now that we go ahead and approve this warning for a special election for a school board representative from the town of Clarendon for Tuesday, May 18th, 2021.
And I will second that motion.
All right, is there any further discussion?
I think that spot ought to be held up until the election, myself, but I don't think we can stop that.
I was gonna bring that up after, if, I wanted to see if this passes or fails, but I had another suggestion regarding that.
All right, go ahead.
Gloria did give me some information that if we go through, um, the special election, the petitions, um, don't require signatures right now due to COVID, so that's the same as other elections.
It would be the same rules as March's election, so basically, people would just need to come in and sign their document, and they're on the ballot.
All right.
Motion on the floor.
Yes, there is a motion on the floor, and it's been seconded. We've had some discussion and enlightenment by our selectmen's admin clerk. Hold on, favor in motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Mr. Chairman, I would now further make a motion that an official letter from the Clarendon Select Board be drafted, to be sent to the Mill River School Board before the close of this week, stating that a special election has been scheduled, and that it is our recommendation that that seat remain vacant until the voters of the town of Clarendon are able to exercise their voice on who should fill that seat.
And in that motion, should you also suggest to the school board to make sure that they notice the town of all applicable persons looking for that seat position?
Sure. Let's, I, I'll include that, that we want to be notified if they receive any, uh, well, any interested party should be directed to the town clerk, because the town clerk is who has to receive people for the ballot.
All right, so that.
That can be included.
So, all right, so you made the motion, it's been seconded. Um, the person that seconded that, are they all right with that?
Yes.
Rob did. Is there any other discussion? Hearing, none of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, couple more signatures on that liquor license. Heidi, do you have anything you'd like to add? Katie, do you have anything you'd like to?
Um, just that Cash, Matt and I have continued with hazard mitigation planning. We had another meeting last week, um, and it's going well, and, um, we have another meeting scheduled for next month.
All right. Cash, you have any other concern?
I guess I'm all set for tonight.
Bob?
I'm set for tonight.
I'm good.
I'm all set. So moved.
Hold on, favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?